At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for November 23rd, 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, let the roll call show. We are, our council members and are present. And we'll move on to the approval of city council minutes, November 9th, 2020. Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I'll move the minutes.
One second.
Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Aye.
Onto the approval of the agenda this evening. Councilmember Kennedy.
I'll go ahead and move the agenda.
Councilport.
Any further discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Tonight's consent agenda is an appointment to the zoning board of appeals. And Mr. Alex Hansen. Councilmember Dill.
I just wanted to point out that I think his last name is spelled wrong. It's actually E-N at the end.
Oh.
If that matters. And then I would like to move.
Councilmember Kennedy, excuse me, I missed you there. Go ahead.
I'll second the approval if that's what Councilmember Dill was doing there before he cut off.
I'm sorry, my internet is really bad right now.
All right, we'll make the most of it. So, we had a motion.
Did she, was that, was your intent to make the motion to approve it or to leave?
I said, yeah, I asked to, I just moved the consent agenda and then it died out.
That's where it broke off just before that.
Right. So, all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll move on to public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and please also mind the two-minute time limit. City Clerk Deaton, does it appear as if we have anyone for public comment on the first round tonight?
Nobody's raising their hand at this time. Oh, wait, somebody just did.
Okay.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, my name is Justin Deesberg. I live at 645 McMunce Street. And I just have concerns about the water tank that's being built where the parking lot was on Dorothy Street. It is just extremely close to my property line. And when I was talking to the people at the water department, there's a fence behind my house that they don't even know if that's my fence or the city's fence. And the tank is pretty close to that fence. And I asked them if they knew what was kind of fence was going to be put there, because when you walk out of my sliding door onto my deck, all you see is this giant concrete monstrosity that, you know, it's, in my opinion, if I would have bought my house with that there, I would have had second thoughts about buying the house, because there's no way, I mean, it's gonna hurt my property value if all you see is this giant thing. So, I wasn't sure if a tree's gonna be put around it, what kind of, is there gonna be a privacy fence put around it? So, it's not so obtrusive. And I know my next-door neighbor who, they said they were gonna come on, also had similar concerns, because all you see from their bedroom window is that huge tank. And if anyone wants to come to my backyard to see how close it is, how big it is, how ugly it is, I more than welcome many of the council members to come take a look. It's awful, and it's been extremely noisy. I've got three kids under four. It's just been really hard this whole summer to implant our backyard, because it's been so noisy, so many people, early and late. That's really all I got. And I just want to make sure that there's some kind of barrier between the house and this tank. Hopefully, so it blocks my view of it. Whether it's, hopefully, a fence and trees, but, you know, whatever. I don't know if there's a plan or anything.
Great, thank you. Lisa, did we have anyone else for public comment on the first round tonight?
Yes, there is. Hello, can you hear us?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Casey Ho, and Justin, who was just speaking, is my neighbor. And we also wanted to see if there was a plan being put in place to do something about the water tank that's just been put up 10 feet from our yard. Yeah, it's basically all we can see in our yard now. It's constantly noisy, which I understand hopefully will be when they're done working, quiet. But, yeah, like Justin said, we basically can't even use our own backyard at this point. I'm afraid to have my kids go out there, and it's noisy. And that's all we see when we look out our big, beautiful door wall now is just this gigantic water tank. So, for the rest of our lives, I guess. We're pretty disappointed that that's our new view.
The noise will subside when they're done working, but the view will not. The view should be amended by maybe some tall trees. If any sort of plan is like a chain-link fence 20 feet tall, that's not gonna work. That is gonna look ugly as shit.
Excuse me.
Maybe some trees would be better than a giant chain-link fence or something? I don't know. We obviously have to look at the tank, and thankfully, it's not gonna be loud once the work is completed, we receive. But, we still have the view to deal with. So, I don't know, maybe like some sort of beautification in the realm of like some taller trees that could maybe lend to a better view would help immensely.
Great, thank you. Lisa. Do, go ahead and see if we have anyone else available for public comment.
Do not.
Okay. And I will discuss on how we'll handle language issues like that again in the future. But, thank you for your public comments. If we have no one else for public comment at this time, we'll move on to the discussion of downtown. And Nate Mack, our DDA, go ahead and take the lead on that.
All right. Thanks for the chat. So, I'm continuing to work with the applicant regarding their tax abatement application. They submitted some additional documentation last week, so we should be able to move forward with that. The annual informational meetings for the DDA were completed. The second one was last Thursday, November the 19th. So, and as part of the line area task force, we're working on pop-up art installations for the downtown. We're hoping to have six installed, but we may have to scale that back based to, based on just a lack of response from people. But, we're working on getting those out. With the new orders from Department of Health and Human Services coming into effect on Wednesday, I had reached out to a number of businesses regarding, restaurants in town regarding their hours and their offerings over the next three weeks. I did put together a flyer that shows the hours restaurants are open and whether people can do curbside delivery, pickup, or whatever. And I posted that on our Facebook page. And the restaurant list garnered a lot of attention from people in the community. I think it was shared over 100 times, and we got a reach of over 17,000 people. So, I was pretty happy to see the reaction from people, you know, it was showing that that was something that they wanted. The snowflake scavenger hunt, the DDA has partnered with the Arts Commission, technically began yesterday. You know, the Arts Commission put, or the library put together a website where people can go and show that they found the snowflakes, track their progress, and enter into the competition. This is just a way for people to come downtown and hopefully explore downtown safely during the pandemic. The feather flags were removed on Friday, and the corn stocks were as well. The garland's gonna be going up soon. So, we have that to look forward to for the Christmas season. I wanted to let everybody know also that draft street's sold. We just received a property transfer affidavit in the office last week. Let's see here.
Hold on just a moment, Nate.
Yeah, yeah.
Lisa, it sounds like we have a live mic somewhere in the.
No, it's my radio. I'm sorry. We have a critical call that I'm listening to.
I'm sorry, chief.
I'll turn it down. I apologize.
No, I'm, I, that's far more important. I did not realize that.
Yeah, I was trying to listen.
All right, sorry, Nate, go ahead.
No worries. Okay, so, so, yeah, with that being said, yeah, I've sent out emails to businesses, you know, asking them to list their promotions that they're doing for the holiday shopping season. I'm working on putting something together for that as well, that we can get out online to people. And then I also had the idea today to do sort of a shop small Saturday slash holiday season promotion, where people are able to show that they've bought something, whether it's in downtown or throughout the city of South Lyon, emailing their receipts to me, and we can enter them into some sort of drawing. I'm still working on officially getting this going, but I spoke with Paul about it today, and hopefully, it's something that will have some legs. I'm gonna go and speak to businesses tomorrow and engage their interest in it. Doing that just because the county in the past had done their shop tax win promotion, which was pretty popular with people, but if they're not doing it, I figured we could at least pick up the slack locally and offer something for people. Well, I'm also working, or last week, Main Street Oakland County said that they were working on getting some additional grant funds for like weatherization, which is, you know, making people's outdoor spaces more, I don't know, I guess adaptable to colder weather as well as some PPE. So, I sent them information on the type of costs that we could have, that we've had purchasing PPE, weatherization stuff for the downtown businesses. And then, I just wanted to let people know that I'm always, you know, actively searching for different grant opportunities that are out there, looking at the Main Street Oakland County website, looking at the National Main Street page, the state of Michigan, the MEDC, just trying to see if there's any other grant opportunities out there that are available for us as we go forward, whether it's the city or the downtown. And I think that's everything I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Nate. Does anyone have anything for Nate this evening? Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Yeah, I, we cut out right when you were talking about draft street, and I'm so very excited to hear that. So, I just wondered if we have any idea when we might know what they're planning on doing with that.
I'm not sure. We haven't spoken with the property owner yet, but hopefully, we'll have something coming in the coming days.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Anyone else with anything for Nate this evening? All right, thanks, Nate.
Thank you.
We're scheduled to go on to the fire chief report. Chief Vogel, are you able to take care of that?
Yeah, I don't think I have to leave.
Okay.
So, I just want to cover a couple topics tonight. COVID, like, I've been receiving a lot of questions about the numbers with COVID. So, I pulled the numbers from our fire reports and then Oakland County. There's definitely a surge. The county's reporting in the 48178 zip code, 260 recent cases. What's interesting about that is we are at a total of 560. So, we've doubled the number just in the last month. For the fire department, we've ran so far this month 12 possible COVID or positive COVID patients compared to four in October and zero in September. It's, it feels like every call now is some type of COVID-related, and it's put a lot of stress on the department. The good news is, I've been on a lot of meetings and discussions about the vaccination. I've teamed up with some fellow fire chiefs. We are appealing to the state because healthcare and EMS workers were, was considered Phase 1A. Police officers are gonna be 1B. They decided to put the firefighters also in 1B, and we've appealed that, saying that we feel that we are also part of the EMS system, that we should be in the 1A. This was a local health department decision. The CDC is not, is clear. So, we've appealed, and hopefully, within a couple weeks, we will be getting the vaccination. I polled my department, who wants it, who doesn't. I'm currently trying to tally the numbers. So, those who've been keeping up on the vaccination understand that there's a issue with keeping it frozen. Once it's been unfrozen, you have five days. So, they're gonna be really strict on numbers. If you say yes, you'll get it. If you don't, then you change your mind. My people might have to wait for Phase 3, which is the general public. So, I've been trying to get out as much information to my staff as possible, just so they can make their own decision. I told everybody, I've been very clear about this, that I will be first one in line. I hope to lead the troops to the vaccination, those who want it, and I support those who don't. I've been, just feel that it's important that I get it first, and we joked that hopefully, I don't grow a tail or something. Lastly, I just want to send some thank yous. Councilman Kittle dropped off some smoke detectors. I just recently found out. I'm very grateful to him. I'm grateful to Kennedy and Nate for helping me get the smoke detectors from Lowell's. I'm grateful from the citizens who have dropped off smoke detectors. And finally, to the mayor, we received our awards. Did I just get kicked out?
No, I think, yeah, we had a screen sharing incident.
Open up. Um. I am very grateful. And I apologize about the radio. I didn't mean to cut Nate off.
Well, don't apologize for that, chief. That's obviously an essential part of your job. So, with that, though, does anyone have anything for Chief Vogel this evening? Please feel free. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you. Chief, I thought there were three vaccines that were coming out. To be. Have a choice in the vaccine?
Well, I, for what we're getting, from what I'm hearing from the Michigan Health Department, that the Pfizer, which is a two-shot, has to be refrigerated or frozen vaccination, will be rolled out first to Michigan region. This is all still pretty early, but it seems like it's happening pretty fast. I don't know as much about the other company, which I think is a little more stable. But, you know, I hope to hear more. We have another, I think tomorrow is my next big Zoom meeting in the afternoon. I'm hoping to hear from Oakland County some, some better answers.
Yeah, I thought that the, one of the other ones was, I don't know if it's Moderna. And, and you're right, I think the other two vaccines are more stable than the Pfizer one. But, if you can explore that, that might be a little bit easier on everybody. I'm not quite sure why the state chose that one, but with the other two that are so close behind. But, you know, it is what it is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
You're muted.
Thank you, chief.
Forgot that I'm muted. Really quickly, I just wondered how you were doing with the smoke detector collection. I have a couple groups that I'm working with to get some more, and I just want to know how much I should push them, and if you are feeling like you have.
I'm always taking smoke detectors, but honestly, between the two council members and the Lowell's donation, we're back to a healthy amount.
Okay.
We're still doing them, but I kind of slowed it down. We had a group meeting about it to decide if that was a service we'd still provide during these tough times. And I made the tough decision to keep moving forward with it. I hate to think that somebody would die in a fire because we didn't put a smoke detector in. We can safely do it with six feet and masks and gloves, and so, we're still doing it. And we have been.
And I heard that somebody said something about carbon monoxide detectors. Is that something that you're collecting also?
Well, we, we usually don't, because they're expensive.
Yeah.
But, we were, two years ago, we got some from the state, and then part of the Lowell's donation, they gave us 20.
Oh, okay, great.
We're not gonna be as liberal with those as we are with the smoke detectors. But, if we find a house without it, they will get one.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else with anything for Chief Vogel tonight? Great. Thanks a lot, chief, for the update.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the police chief report and Chief Sobick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a couple things this evening. Obviously, as you can see, we're still participating in the No Shave November. If you want to make a donation, we can, we're good until the end of November. You can stop by the station, although we're not recommending that. If you'd like to mail it in, or you can go on our Facebook page and go online and donate online. I know some of you have already donated, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. Our new officer was sworn in November 17th. Officer Joseph Chapsky is on his first phase of the field training program. He's on midnight shift with Officer Jacobs, so we're expecting good things from him. And I think we've got a long-term commitment from him as well. And I just completed my 29th year of service with the city of South Lyon. I believe it's been a great partnership for, for both me and my family and for the city. And so, I'm just very fortunate to serve in the position I am. I'm looking forward to a couple more years. And that's all I've got for you tonight.
Well, congratulations on that, chief. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Did I hear you say a couple more years or a couple more decades?
Well, let's just, let's just worry about tomorrow. Let's just kind of get through this COVID season. Then we'll go from there.
You'll get through it. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing well at the health, at the, at the police department. We have one person that, that has, that has COVID. But, he actually hasn't worked for at least seven or eight, nine days now. But, he was not working in the station about a week prior to him getting it through a contact through, through a sports program. So, he's feeling a little bit better, but everybody else is healthy. And so, like I said in my report, we've kind of shut down some of the services to the public, just, just to kind of safeguard some of our employees, because if it goes through our department, then we may have some issues. So, we're being as smart as we can. We, you know, we have these meetings with Paul, the city, other city department heads every Tuesday, just to discuss where we're at. So, I think that's been very helpful and just following strict protocol in our station. And so far, we're doing really well. So, yes, we will get through it and try to be as smart as we can with it.
Thanks, chief. If no one else has anything for Chief Sobick. All right, we'll end up moving on to our MERS presentation tonight.
Mr. Mayor, tonight, we have Sue Feinberg from MERS of Michigan is at a meeting to give a presentation on the most recent actuarial report. She's also here tonight to be a part of our agenda item discussing the items relating to the defined benefit and defined contribution plan. And I'd like to introduce Sue to take over the meeting. I need a quick look at her presentation. She didn't sneak anything anywhere you could really see much, but she's here tonight to go over the numbers based upon December 31st of 2019.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I think I've met a few of you before at previous council meetings. For those of you who may not know me, I have been with MERS for 16 years. I'm the regional manager for Southeast Michigan, so I work with the employers on plan changes, reviewing the annual actuarial valuation and things of that nature. If you're not completely familiar with MERS, we are a not-for-profit company. We separated from the state of Michigan in 1996. And we are governed by a board of elected constituents. Our actuarial firm is Gabriel Roder and Smith. For your annual actuarial valuation, which I thought I would go through tonight on a high level, we can make this an interactive conversation. You know, I really don't want to just present to you. If you have any questions along the way, I've found that sometimes it's more useful if we can just stop and talk through the question, and it might spur something for someone else. So, what we're gonna look at tonight is your 2019 annual actuarial valuation, which is your most recent valuation. Now, what that is, is that is a snapshot of everything that happened in 2019. So, what happens at the very end of the year, the actuaries take all that information, all your experience, assets, you know, the market value for the year, all of those different calculations, assumptions, numbers. They work on the first part of the year, and then the annual valuations start coming out the end of May. And all 850 municipalities that have defined benefit plans in MERS have their annual report by the end of June. Now, that report is giving you your required employer contributions for the next year. So, your 2019 valuation is giving you your employer contributions for 2021. Something that I want to note before we start into the report was MERS does an extensive experience study every five years. And this is where Gabriel Roder and Smith go out, and they compare within the nation, you know, what experience, how the experience is doing against the assumptions. how the experience is doing against the assumptions that they're using. So mortality rates, rate of returns, all those different assumptions. They look at it countrywide. They look at other systems equal to ours. They look at the experience within the state of Michigan, and then they also drill down and they look at the actual experience within our plan. And then they come back and they make recommendations to the MERS board if they feel that it warrants maybe looking at changing some of our assumptions on a going-forward basis. This usually results in the experience showing that we need to become more conservative in certain areas to make sure that our employers are funding these plans properly. You know, so with this last experience study, they did it in two parts. So the first part was lowering the rate of return assumption. So prior, MERS rate of return assumption was 7.75. They lowered it to 7.35. So that is impactful in your 2021 rates. We projected this and we gave it to you. We showed it to you in your 2018 valuation, letting you know it was coming. And now you actually see the numbers and the impact of it, and it will be included in your 2021 actuarial valuation. Now, along with lowering that rate of return assumption, they also changed the wage inflation assumption. They changed that from 3.75 to 3%. Now, what I would like to add with that wage inflation is it's something that a lot of times causes confusion. So just to explain how that's made up, it's actually what they take into consideration, they take into consideration a large-scale economic factors, which make, which are made up of price inflation and then also real wage growth. So what they're looking at is they're looking at the overall pay growth over a long-term period of time versus just annual pay increases. So that was that first part of the valuation. The second part of the assumption changes that they made were the demographic changes. So the demographic changes basically are mortality, mortality improvements and rate of return. It's been a long day. Rate of return of people actually retiring. So what that's looking at, and they broke it down. You know, we know that everybody's living a little bit longer, right? But then there's certain demographics that, you know, it, some of these changes were enough that we made adjustments. And for, for example, libraries, with librarians, we found that librarians seem to work past their first eligible date to retire and they seem to have great mortality rate. So they're living longer and they're working longer. Now you compare that with public safety, which you have, and what the public safety seems to be a little bit different, and they're also retiring at their first eligibility. So they made some adjustments to those categories and then the overall mortality table of taking into consideration how long everyone is going to be actually collecting that pension check. So that impact is going to, it was shown now in your 2019 valuation. Again, just to give you an idea, projecting out, but it won't be impactful until your 2022 employer contributions. So with that, and I think you all have a copy of the valuation, but if it would be useful, if it's all right, I'll go ahead and like share the screen. And we can go through the annual valuation and kind of talk through the high points of it. Does that fit everyone's expectations? This is where, see, before I was like experimenting to make sure I could share my screen. So I apologize for that. I didn't realize that everybody would see me do that. All right, let's try this again. Okay. All right, now it just has to let me move the pages. All right, don't get dizzy. Get back up to the top of the report. Okay, so again, this is going to be a snapshot of 2019 because we're going to wait until the entire year is completed. So anything that's happened this year isn't going to be included in this report. This is just going to be everything from 2019. We're getting close to that time again where they're going to start looking at this year, but for now, we're still using 2019 as the most current contributions. Now, in this, the first thing that we're going to do is we are not going to jump to the end of the report. You'll have to excuse me. This is a little touchy. We're going to take a look at your funding status. So what this report does is it's going to give you your funding level as of the prior year. So in the executive summary, we're looking at the end of 2018. So at the end of 2018, you were 68% funded. At the end of 2019, you were 66% funded. So the first thing you're going to say is what happened? You know, why did our funding level go down? Well, when I was just talking about the experience study, the impact on most of the municipalities within our system, it was about a 2% to 3% percentage drop in your funding level with that adjustment of the rate of return assumption going from a 7.75 down to 7.35. That did lower everyone's funding level. So it wasn't anything that you did. It was one of our adjustments, which I know can be frustrating on your part when you're doing everything you're supposed to. So then we're going to take a look at your required contributions. So what this is going to show you is this shows you your monthly contributions, and this is what we're going to be billing you. Now, you see on the right, this phase in and the no phase in numbers. The difference is when we first did an experience study with the impact of lowering our rate of return assumption from 8 to 7.75, it was pretty impactful. So what we did was we gave municipalities the option, if they wanted to phase in the impact over five years, they could. Or by not phasing it in, they could pay the impact of that, you know, right out of the gates. So the default has been phasing it in through this last one. Well, what we're going to do now, and I looked, and it looks like the city right now is paying the no phase in rates. So on that far, far right column under no phase in, that 52,808 is approximately what you're, as of July 1st of 2020, what you're being billed on a monthly basis. Now, if you go over to the third column from that, and it says no phase in, no phase in is going to be the default with the new impact of this rate of return assumption. So that doesn't mean that you can't keep basing the rates in. What that means is you'll just need to shoot us an email if you need to pay the phase in versus the no phase in. So the difference is not phasing in the impact of changing those assumptions is that 58,877. If you choose to phase it in, it will go down to that 55,451. So we're just showing you what the difference is. We definitely encourage you not to phase in the impact if you don't need to. Underneath that, it shows you, broken down by divisions, how much the employees are contributing. And it always gives you a look back to the year before so that you can see if there was any changes. And as you can see, if you look to the very bottom, the command division went from contributing 1.75% to contributing 2%. A lot of these pages are, they're great information. The actuaries put a lot of information in here about the assumption changes. They talk about the economic assumptions. And then they go ahead and they give you some. This is just. Sorry, give me, I forgot the best way to move this little guy. All right, here we go. What we're, what they do here is they're showing you on the far right in this column, this is the new assumptions for your 2021 with the 7.35 and 3% wage increase. What your liabilities, your assets are, what your funding level is currently, and then required employer contribution. Then really for budgeting purposes, and just to give you a, you know, a look ahead, this is showing you what if this year we were using the new demographic assumptions also, what the impact would be on your contributions and your funding level. So again, with this change in assumptions, it, they're projecting it's going to lower your rate of return, or not your rate of return, your funding level 2%. And then you can see the increase in the monthly cost. That third column is if you just want to budget on a more conservative basis, we're just showing you what it would look like using a rate of return assumption of 5.35. Sometimes people like to land right in the middle and just budget from a more conservative basis. So that's why they're showing you this table. This next table, I think, is hopefully something that will help you even more on a budgeting going forward basis because of the very top of that box, this is for 2021. This is with that new rate of return assumption. So the line straight across there, beginning Janu- July 1st of 2021, you'll see on the far right column, that you're going to be your minimum required annual contribution, that 706,524. Now, if you go down to that middle column, this is what it's going to look like when we add the demographic assumptions. Again, they show you that top line just as a comparison if we were using them now. But when you're looking forward and you're budgeting, you're going to want to look at the middle column of that, and you're going to want to look at that second line, okay? That second line where it says fiscal year beginning July 1st of 2022. So going across, they show you, you know, the funding level going down a percent, and then they also show you what your minimum required contribution is going to be, which is at 764,000. So you can see with the changes in the assumptions, it is, you know, driving your cost up and lowering your rate of, or your funded level. Goodness. So looking forward, use that box for budgeting purposes. Again, it's going to change every year as the numbers change, but this is going to give you a pretty good idea going forward where you are. This next page, even better, it shows you on a graph if you really want to project out in the future. So this top graph shows you your funding percentage. And it shows you the trajectory of you going up in your funding status. That thick green line, that is there for treasury because treasury looks at that line. Treasury's point of concern is 60%. So they are looking at any groups that are 60% and below. Yes? No questions? Okay. So that's why the thick green line is there. That's what they're looking at. So when you're looking at this graph and you're wondering, you know, well, now my funding level just went down a little bit, am I going to trend back up again? Look at the orange dotted line because this line includes all of the demographic changes, the rate of return assumption changes. And it shows you in your funding level going up. So as you can see, when it gets to the top, you know, where it starts to flatten out, that's when you are 100% funded. So approximately what, 2039 right now, and this is assuming that you don't make any additional contributions and all of the assumptions are met and it's a perfect world, rate of returns are coming in. But this is just giving you an idea of what they're projecting. The table below that, this table shows you your contributions and where they're going to trend. So with this one, you are going to again, look at the orange dotted line and you can see right here, hopefully you can see my little cursor, where you are with all the demographic changes. So just under that 800,000. And it's going to trend up a little bit. So you're going to get about to a million dollars. And then this is where you're 100% funded, about 2039, and it takes a drastic drop. When it takes a drastic drop like that, that's because you're going to drop down to the normal cost of your plan. Since your plan is closed, the only division that's open in your plan defined benefit anymore is your command division. So you're not going to have a lot of new people going in there either. So that normal cost and that unfunded liability is paid off, is going to be the cost of the actives in your plan earning one more year of service credit. So you can get an idea at peaks and then it drops off. This is you paying off, you know, that difference between being 66% funded and being 100% funded. That piece is amortized like a mortgage. So we're taking your unfunded liability, which we can see on this table, and we're amortizing that over a period of time. It's a fixed period of time. So with this annual valuation, you're at 19 years. Next year, you're going to go to 18 and you're going to continue to go down one year until that unfunded liability is paid off. That is going to be one of the drivers of your cost going up as you are paying off that piece of unfunded liability and become 100% funded. So on this next table, on table one, that column on the far right, the total normal cost, again, that's what I was referring to. That's the cost currently of your actives that are still in your plan earning one more year of service credit. And that cost comes from the provisions in their division, also, you know, their demographics. How close are they to retirement? You know, are we thinking they're going to leave at their first eligibility? So that's what's driving that normal cost of them accruing service. The next column is the employees' contributions. So what they're contributing towards that. Now, unfortunately, because your plan is closed, once it's closed, we can't break the next one, the, those next few columns down in percentages like we can with the command division, which is still open. So if you just look at that command division, you'd see that it breaks down to the normal cost for the command division is 8.04%. The unfunded liability is, you know, what's driving the cost of the plan, that's 16.48%. So that brings your, if you're paying the phase in, that 23.21%. So that, when you're reporting your payroll every month, that's what we're billing you. So for those closed divisions, you look at it in numbers. So you can see overall, if you go to the very bottom, where your costs are being driven from. So the total normal cost for your plan is that 209,000. The unfunded liability, that payment is at 497,520. So that is where the bulk of your cost is. But you are on a plan to lower that and become 100% funded, which I know is your goal. Any questions about anything so far? Do you guys have a long day too? This next table, table two, breaks down all the provisions in your divisions. So Ask Me, Police and Fire, these are the provisions that the employees that are still active in the plan have. Okay, all new hires for these divisions are going into your defined contribution plan. The only division in here that is still open is going to be that command division. Table three shows you your, your participants. So it kind of gives you an idea. So for, you know, Division One, the Ask Me Division, shows you what change there was in active. So you lost one active person for 2018. One person left, so you were down to 15. At the very bottom of this, it shows you total active employees. You went from 37 to 35. You have, you increased your former vested members from eight to nine, which means someone left the city. They were vested, their service was vested, but they're not eligible to collect the benefit yet. So you have nine people out there and we're projecting what that total liability to the city is and what their average age is, or average age is 52. Most of them will not be able to collect until they reach age 60, and then they'll be able to collect on what, however many years of service they actually had with the city.
Could I ask you, just hold up for just a second. Councilmember Kurtzwell, did you have a question? And you're muted, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Yes, could we go back up to the multiplier?
Yes, could we go back up to the multiplier?
For which division?
Well, I just want to generally talk. It looks like the multiplier is the same for everybody, 2.5.
Correct.
Okay. So that multiplier means what?
That multiplier is part of a formula. That's a great question. So when someone gets ready to retire and they're going to retire out of their Ask Me group, they have a 2.5% multiplier. When they retire, if they're vested, they can leave at 60 and collect on whatever, you know, as long as they're vested, whatever years they have in at the city. For a full retirement, it's age 55 with 25 years of service. They do have the option, you see underneath that, that 5025 and 5515. Those are not something the city adapted. That's a default within MERS. If someone meets one of those requirements, they can actually apply for a pension, but it is reduced pension, so it's not an additional cost to the city. But very few people take advantage of this. But if for some reason, like a health reason or something like that, some people have been known to go early and take a reduced pension. The final average compensation of five years, that means that over the period of five years, sexually consecutive months, we're going to use their highest earnings to calculate their FAC. So what that means is when they get ready to retire, so say they've got their 55 and they've got 25 years of service. We're going to take their 25 years of service. We're going to multiply that by their 2.5 multiplier. And then we are also going to multiply that by their highest and best final average compensation. So say that's $60,000. That's going to be their formula. That formula is going to give you their annual benefit, and then that benefit is divided into 12, and that's what they're going to receive on a monthly basis for the rest of their life.
And let me, let me narrow the question. The number 2.50, which is the multiplier, I think that's how that's being defined, the benefit multiplier, that serves what purpose in the formula? And to me, it's looks like it is a, a factor that is used to increase the pension amount. Because I assume, I assume that that multiplier has a range. So it could be 2.25, it could be 2.0. How it's just the multiplier.
That's what the city adopted. That's what the city set up for these divisions. And you're correct, you can set up 1% multiplier. Two and a half is one of the higher multipliers that you're going to see, but that is something that is a decision. All of these provisions are decisions that are made by the city when they came into MERS or things that they adopted once they were in MERS. So these are completely structured per the city.
Okay, that multiplier changed somewhere in 2008 or 2009. And it's my understanding that that multiplier represents a Cadillac sort of addition to the pension. I have called around, looked at some other cities. There, I have not found another city that has a multiplier of 2.50. Is there, are you aware of another city?
Oh, a lot of them do. A lot of them do, and a lot of them are like yours. They're closed plans. That's a plan. You know, it is. It's a higher multiplier, and so it's going to cost more than a lower multiplier, and people are going to have, you know, a better pension. As municipalities try to control costs and set, you know, set a different structure up for the future, a lot of people, a lot of our municipalities have closed their plans. And, you know, I can be happy to send along. I don't know if we have how current it is, but we have something that would show you how many plans have made changes. But there are not that many now that still have that. Two and a half% multiplier is an open division for new hires to go into. They are setting up lower multipliers for new hires or they're closing their plan and going to define contribution, which is what you did. And in the very back of this valuation, the last couple of pages is your historical book. So now, let me see if I can get to the end. Because what this does, if you, it starts on, starts on page 27 of your annual valuation. This is a historical look from the time that the city joined MERS, which was in 1967. And it shows any changes in provisions that wasn't an A. Higher. It was a 2.25, and they increased it to a 2.5. Back in 94, it was, well, let's, let me go back. Let's go all the way back to 1979. So in 1979, it was a 1.5% multiplier. In 94, they went up to a 1.5. In 2000, they went to a 2.25. And then in 2008, they went to the 2.5% multiplier. Go ahead.
Is 2.5 the max?
You can go higher if it is a collectively bargained provision. In non-union divisions, unless they're included with union divisions, then no, two and a half would be the highest. But in collectively bargained units, they're, you know, especially in southeast Michigan, the provisions tend to be a little bit higher. There's a higher union concentration. You know, I've seen 2.75, and I've even seen a 3.
Because the, the multiplier, to give them that kind of multiplier, I would think it could be balanced a little bit with some higher contributions, employee contributions into the plan. So I think that it's just important, I think, for people to understand that there is a very, very excellent multiplier in this pension that asking employees to come up a little bit in their contributions, I don't think is asking too much. And I hope the employees understand that. You know, I mean, we have great employees. Everybody loves them, but, you know, we all got to come to the table with something. So.
Just to give you an idea, an average, let me give you an average. An average in our system with two and a half% multipliers, the average that employees are paying in is right around six and a half or a little bit higher is the average employee contributions. So yes, it is low. What I have learned is everybody's situation is so different. You know, I work with 280 municipalities, and, you know, I've walked in and I've seen something like this, and it's the first thing, you know, Paul's heard me preach this. You know, gee, you know, the employees could be paying in more. And then when you listen to, you know, everything else. So employees have been, I've talked to cities where the employees are foregoing pay increases. They're paying 20% of their health benefits. You know, so it's more of a holistic, the big picture. And a lot of times when I see these, so I try not to jump to conclusions because a lot of times it is, there's a lot more to the story that employees have taken concessions in other areas to keep that low. I don't know, you know, what your situation is within the city, but everybody, everybody's situation is really different. You know, different decisions have been made over the years. You know, we see this pretty commonly where throughout the years, these union groups have negotiated higher multipliers. And when they did that, it set your funding level back every time because back then, if they made an enhancement, they weren't quite required to fund it, pre-fund it. So it would be, it would automatically cause unfunded liability because every time they increased their multiplier, all that prior service was then going to be calculated at a higher multiplier where our actuaries every year, when they're looking at this and they're looking at each one of your employees, they're anticipating, you know, okay, this is going to be the formula that they're going to go out with, and we're projecting paying increases. And so what it's going to be, what their FAC is going to be, so that you're pre-funding the correct amount. When all of a sudden, things are changed, and now their benefit's going to be more than you've been underfunding it, so it creates unfunded liability. You know, we've made a lot of different adjustments and changes within our system to stop that from ever happening again. Now employers cannot make any changes to their plan that create liability unless they're at least 80% funded, and it has to be paid for upfront to stop this and get everyone in the system moving in the right direction.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if this is the right time to bring this up, but let me know, Sue, if you want it discussed later. I assume that there is a break even in this formula. And by the break even, I mean that, let's say we have 70 employees. I'm just going to, I'll make even simpler. We have 50 employees. Let's say that five of them are retired. And these are the numbers that we're working with, okay? With 50 employees and five retired. How do the numbers change if the city decides, let's say, we run into very bad economic times and we have to lay off, let's say, 20 employees? You know, a couple here, a couple here, a couple there, a couple there in the departments, and we really go bare bones in terms of employees? So that brings the employees down to about 30 that are contributing into the plan. How do these numbers change? When you, where, do you know what our break even is? Where if we go below a certain amount of employees in the city, we will seriously be risking and increasing that unfunded liability? Because you just don't have that many employees contributing into the system anymore.
Well, the majority, let's go back here. So when you look at the employees not contributing, and you look at scaling back your employees, and you look at how much the employees are contributing, to your point earlier, the contributing factor from them is very low. So what would happen, okay? So if you take out all these active employees, they're not contributing to the plan anymore, but you're not paying their normal cost anymore. You're still going to have this unfunded liability, which is promised benefits that have not been funded yet. You know, it's already been promised. The city, you know, needs to follow through with that obligation. And so you're going to be, this is a number that's not going to change. It's not going to go down if your employees go down. You're going to continue to pay that. But if your employee count goes down, this normal cost goes down because you're not paying a normal cost for them. And then this would be, you know, what's not coming into the plan on the employee side, which is pretty minimal. So as far as your question, I, I'm not answering it as far as a break even point. I can just tell you, this would be the financial impact. So if, you know, as of tomorrow, you had absolutely no actives in your plan anymore, then you would still be paying down that unfunded liability piece.
So in other words, layoffs, should it ever happen, would not have a significant financial impact on where we are going with the pension?
No. It wouldn't, it wouldn't increase your cost.
Okay. That's kind of what I wanted to know. Not that that's going to happen, but I just, I just want to be able to assess all financial aspects of dealing with these numbers. So if our contribution rates were higher from the employee, if they were up around 5%, 6%, like what you were saying, then there may be a little bit more of a financial impact.
Well, the impact would be on the employer's contribution. So when we look at that command division and we look at the normal cost for the command divisions, 10.04, normal cost, they're contributing 2%. So the city is paying 8%. So if that went up and they were paying 5%, you know, then the city's cost would go down to 5%. But if they just went away, that whole cost would go away. But if the employees are contributing more, it's just going to be less that the city is contributing while they're still in the plan.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. You gave very good answers.
Sure. My pleasure. Good questions. Any other questions on this? All righty. Where were we? The provisions. Summary. Okay. Now we're coming to my favorite table. I think this is a great table. This is your flow of assets. So this really shows you what's coming in and going out of your plan. So it goes back, it gives you a 10-year look back. So if you look at Table 5 and you look at the very bottom line, this is from 2019. So on that far right column, that employer contribution, that's the minimum amount that we billed you. So that was the phase in amount. And I take that back. It looks like you're not phasing it in. Because, the reason I say that is because that, that's the minimum requirement. So keep in mind, our default right now is phase in. So we billed you, told you your minimum contribution for the year was 573,966. That additional amount in the column next to it, that $7,711, I'm pretty sure is the difference. Because of the way the actuaries set this up, that that's our default, if you pay the no phase in, it shows that you're making additional contribution because of being the default. So next year, if you continue and you're paying the no phase in, then that additional column won't be there because you'll be paying, that will be the minimum required amount. So I'm sorry if that looks confusing, and I said that earlier. The next column is the employee contributions. So that $47,150, $15 is what the employees contribute over the year. The 572,587, that's actually the money that you earned, your investment earnings on your balance. So your balance as of the end of the year and your assets was at $12,243. Going out of your plan in retiree benefits, which is going to either retirees and/or their beneficiaries, is at $767,721. So just from a cash in, cash out, you know, looking, you're like, jeez, we're making our minimum contributions. It seems like we should be, our funding level should be coming up more quickly. Of course, you know, when you look at our changes and assumptions, that is definitely impactful. And you can see the years where we've made changes to our assumptions. But when you look at this, if you look at just making your minimum contributions, you know, and how much is actually going out and coming in, you can kind of get an idea of how much you need to, if you want to start moving that needle more quickly, if you had the ability to and wanted to make more contributions into the plan, we just help move that needle a little bit more quickly. You don't have to. It's just something that, you know, we do recommend it if that's one of your goals, would be to pay more than just that minimum requirement that we're billing you. But I do think it's a, a good table. This just breaks it down by division. Table 6 breaks down all your divisions, what the liabilities are for your retirees in each division. Each division has its own funding percentage, too. And then it's an aggregate. When we tell you that the city is 66% funded, that is your aggregate number for all of your different divisions. Each one of them has their own assets and liabilities. And the next tables, these just break it down for, you know, historical purposes. You can look back and see, you know, what your liabilities were, your funding percentages. And a lot of times, you can tie these tables in with our changes to our assumptions and then back to those provision tables in the very back where it shows you each division and when they made enhancements to their plans. And it helps tell the story of this historical. And it helps tell the story of this historical look back. You can see here, we, we layer each division, so any gain or loss is layered. And it's all on a 19-year path to all be funded in 19 years. Probably the next, we have your, all of your GASB 68 information. And then the provisions that we talked about, broken down by each separate division. This is great when you're in negotiations, if there's a conversation. The plan provisions and actuarial assumptions. What this is right here, this 4%, it's not a true 4% cost, but it is a load. It is an assumption that's built in because one of the changes that the actuaries recommended a few years ago was they were seeing that at the end of someone's career, there was a large lump sum payment that would be coming in. And it would be, it's up to the employer as to whether those large payouts are includeables in the FAC or they're excludable. And they noticed with the city of South Lyon that there were those lump sums coming in. And so they actually added a load so that we could anticipate that. Because again, MERS has no say in, you know, what you want included in the wages. We just need to make sure that we're using the best assumptions. And when those lump sums were coming in and we didn't have any idea, they were at the end of someone's career, they were coming in. What it would do is again, it would have that impact of creating unfunded liability. Because all these projections every year, you know, may have projected that someone was going to get, you know, a $30,000 pension. And then once that lump sum comes in, it increases what their pension benefit is going to be. And so they put these numbers in there to make sure that you're funding what we are anticipating and what your experience is showing us, you're including in those last, that last payout. And then we have state reporting. Everybody has to report form, you know, 5572. And we have all of the numbers and the calculations that you need for that reporting. So you just use all of these numbers in the report and then you attach the annual vow. And again, they're looking for municipalities that are under 60% funded and what they're doing. Anybody above it, they know that you're on a path to be 100% funded in 19 years. And that's the end of the valuation. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
I'd like to just set a a question in the future here. Say 15 to 20 years down the road, okay? We have, let's say we got 50 employees that are within 20 years of retirement. And five to 10 employees that are within 10 years of employment across the divisions, I don't, didn't differentiate. Say they choose voluntarily to increase their contribution to their own retirement plans for the next 10 years till they retire. Will that have an effect on the other employees in the plans?
It's really not an option. It's not an option in a defined benefit plan for employees to contribute additional contributions. It's not going to increase their benefit. I mean, if they did it out of goodness of their heart to bring the funding up for the whole plan, but that would be the only benefit. It would not increase their benefit and it would be a good thing for the city if they did it, but it, the plan isn't structured that way.
Okay, all right, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt the other employees though.
Oh, no, no. But defined benefit employees, again, it wouldn't, it wouldn't benefit the ones that are paying and more if they did. It wouldn't hurt the other employees. It would benefit the overall plan. It wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt other employees and it wouldn't benefit the employee that's contributing more. It wouldn't increase his benefit. Like it would with a defined contribution plan. The more they put in, the larger balance they have when they get ready to retire. This one is just completely based on that formula. If the employees are paying.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Anyone else have anything?
If you have any questions at all about this or the assumptions, the impacts. This year we did a virtual conference. Because we normally have, you know, a regular conference. So this year, they were all recorded. And so if you go to the MERS of Mich website, all the sessions are recorded. And, you know, we have one with our chief actuarial, can't remember the rest of his title. Anyway, David, who is part of one of the conversations. And those are really interesting. If you just want to dig a little bit deeper into, you know, the assumptions or the valuation or defined benefit plans, they're all in there and you can go back and, and watch those. Or you can call me and I'll try and answer your questions.
Well, thank you very much, Sue. That was very lightning and we appreciate you coming out. Oh, Councilmember Chriswell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sue, I don't know if you can talk about it, but I was just wondering, what does a city do in managing its MERS that gets it sued by MERS? And, and it's the, it's the lawsuit down in, in Wayne. What, what, what do we need to avoid? What do we need to not do?
So I'll explain to you what happened. And this was a conversation that's been going on for a while. As you know, I mean, City of Wayne's been putting one foot in front of the other for a while now. Trying to figure things out. And so I have been working with them pretty closely. And it came to the point where it just wasn't in the budget for them to make their MERS minimum contributions. They decided, at two cities, I think they decided they were going to, oh, they're paying, they were either going to pay nothing or, sorry, there's two of them going on right now. One of them said, we can pay you 25% of what you're billing us. And the other one said, we can't pay you anything. And so when that happens, we start working with Treasury and we work with the city's attorneys and the city council and come to an agreement on how we're going to move forward. With Wayne, it was decided that a millage, it, it forces us to file a judgment lobby, is what it does. So the city completely stops paying for three months. And so then after three months, Treasury's involved. And, you know, it starts to go into a legal process. And so then we work with their attorneys and we file a judgment lobby. We were able to come to, you know, an agreement, so we didn't have to go to court. And how that works, and I'm not, you know, forgive me because I'm not on that piece of it, I'm not on the legal, so I can't give you the legal jargon. But what happens is the taxpayers are levied that amount that the city cannot pay towards their pension. So that minimum requirement that the city can't pay, the taxpayers are being taxed for the next year to make up that difference. And the city hopes that after a year, they'll be in a better position to be able to start making those payments again. And if they are not, then same process will occur again. So it falls on the back of the taxpayers. If the city of South Lyon stopped paying us as the planned fiduciary, we need to make sure that that promised benefit is funded by the city. You know, and it is a benefit that is protected under the state constitution for public employees. And so we have to do everything we can to collect the money so that the benefit's there. So that's why we take that measure. It's really the only measure that we have is a legal, a legal avenue, but it's not hostile. You know, we've worked with both of the cities right now. So hopefully next year, things will turn around.
Well, I think, I think it's important for people to understand that there are legal consequences to, to everything that goes on with this pension. I was a little bit surprised to learn about this because I wasn't quite sure what the grounds were. And I think you pretty well, you explained it. And, and I would agree, from what I've heard, it has not been a hostile thing. It's just something we need to work out. But don't they also have the option of bankruptcy? I mean, isn't there, if, if at some point, because, because this levy is, I think it's 1.3 mils for the next three, four, four years. I mean, this is a very heavy property tax that is now coming on to the residents. And I believe, as it was explained to me, it's coming on, on the winter tax because that's the smallest of the taxes. You know, summer, winter is the small one. So you have a very large tax increase coming in in February. I think a lot of people are going to be shocked at it. So we, we need to understand how important all of this process is. So that's why I brought it up. Thank you. Once again, very, very, very informative.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So Sue, was it 1.3 mils with 13 mils on that one? In Wayne?
I think it was 1.3. It was about, well, not a tax expert. It was about on a, I think, and I, I read the article, I saw probably the same article you did, that I think on a home value of $100,000, it increased their taxes, their winter taxes.
That's where the 1,300 comes in then, right?
About, yeah, 1,300.
But I, I thought it was going to be for like four years or better.
You know, and I think, again, I'm not part of drawing up the, the legal. I get out of all that. But the city is hoping that even though it's been drawn up that way, that, you know, as soon as they can start making those contributions, then that will fall off. So they're hoping that, you know, given another year, their circumstances will change. And so that levy can be removed.
So obviously you don't want to, to be in the same boat that they're, they find themselves in. Can you have any ideas to what level their, their liabilities were funded at? I mean, the solid green line that you showed was at 60%. We're currently at about 66. We were at 68 or whatever. Do you have an idea where, what range they were in before they ended up in this situation?
You know, it's been long coming. I mean, they, they've had financial struggles as a city for a while now. As far as their funding status for their pension, yikes, don't quote me on this. I think they're in the 40s. I think they're around mid 40s. And they do, they do have a, a large unfunded liability for their plan, which is just really tough for them to meet that. And then, you know, as we are moving everybody towards, you know, becoming 100% funded, that's increasing their cost too. So there's a lot of things that goes into it. City of Wayne has, has had some struggles for, for a few years financially.
Yeah, so I mean, they weren't just, just under that 60% level. And it, I mean, they were down significantly below that, so thank you very much.
And you know, when you think about it, you look at the city's unfunded level. I know that it's, it's a hard pill to swallow to think that, that you're 60% funded, 66% funded. And, you know, you don't, you want to be better funded. But if you look at the total, I mean, your total unfunded liability is like $6.5 million. There's a lot of municipalities that have at least double that, triple that. I mean, I see $45 million in unfunded liabilities. So there's a big difference there too, in how much their required contributions are. Yes.
Well, I, I would agree with you, Sue. I mean, but on the other hand, the cities, at least that I've looked at, have much larger populations and have much larger revenue sources. So it's proportionate to the pie that they're eating. We, on the other hand, $6 million, what we have in unfunded liability for the city is more than, I think I'd have to go back, I don't want to be inaccurate, but it's pretty close to what our general budget is. So, you know, so it, it, you're kind of, you can't, it can't compare it. We're a much smaller city. We have a much smaller revenue base. We have flatlined. That is a big chunk of money. And that's a huge strain on, on, on the budget. Like you said, I mean, at some point, we'll have it paid off. So, but it's something to, to be aware of, that's for sure. Can't, can't, can't take your eye off of it.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
At the same time, all those comments are pertinent. But we've always been in a position where we were making our, our numbers. We were doing what we were supposed to. This has been a long-term plan and we're still on it. So I'm just grateful we're not one of the communities like a Wayne that is going to take it on the chin. But we've always taken care of our business, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Kittle. Does anyone else have anything for Sue this evening? Thank you, Sue.
Now I'm going to stick around for the addendum conversation, if that's all right.
Absolutely. New business number one this evening, MERS defined benefit plan and defined contribution adoption agreement amend addendums. And Patricia, we're going to come to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have been requested, or I should say required, by MERS of Michigan to update both our defined benefit and defined contribution adoption plans. So the addendums that were presented to you, and there is seven in total. Five for our benefit plans and two for our defined contribution plans that we have. These will be supplements to our contracts that we already have in place. And what they're going to do is present a more accurate reflection in the benefit calculations and have more standardized language. So we have an agenda item tonight that I kind of went off the agenda notes, so I apologize, but I'll read the agenda note. MERS of Michigan will be at our meeting to give a presentation on the most recent actuarial report. Additionally, at this meeting, we will need to approve defined benefit plan and defined contribution adoption agreement addendums for each of our working groups. Our representative from MERS, Sue Feinberg, will be at the meeting to answer any questions you may have to report in the agreement. You have the materials, they were presented. We had had the additional documents today of the defined contribution plans. We wanted to get those reviewed at the same time since we had Sue's availability tonight. And we are requesting an approval of the defined benefit and defined contribution plan adoption agreement addendums for each of our current working groups.
A little bit, I'm sorry, can I give you a little bit? Go ahead. Why we're doing this, because I think that's going to be a question. Just so that you know, these are a lot of questions we've never asked before. And so this is a compliance issue. So all 950 municipalities in MERS that have any type of pension plan with our system, we're asking to do this. And the reason we're asking to do it is because we get calls all the time saying, how, how are we administering this? Like, well, we don't know. You're administering it, you know, how are you? Who are you allowing in? What are you including? Because a lot of times, they just never told us that information and we never required the information. So with this, this is a compliance exercise so that you confirm, this is exactly how we're administering our plan. This is how we earn service credit. This is who's eligible. And then bless it. And then when you send it to us, we are going to wind up uploading it in your employer portal so that on a going-forward basis, if you have turnover or you ever have questions about, well, what's supposed to be included in the, you know, the last payouts of our defined benefit people, you can just look on the portal and all that information will be on there. Now, keep in mind, this doesn't mean that no changes can be made going forward. We just want you to confirm, this indeed is the way, you know, the way, you know, we want our plan to be administered as of January 1st, 2021. So I know it's, it's been kind of a daunting task, but it really, I think, is going to be great going forward that we'll have all this data, you know, in one place for you to go in and actually see it.
Does anybody have any questions? Or, you know, again, this is all, all information that we are currently doing in all of our, in our defined benefit and defined contribution contracts. We're just defining it. So we're, we're specifically spelling out the classification of employees who are eligible to participate, what a definition of a service month is, how many hours they have to work within that month to get credit for it. We're defining and clarifying what leaves, absences are allowed to be included in their contrib, into their contribution amounts and calculations. We're clarifying our definition of the FAC for both the employer and the employee contribution. So that we're just, you know, again, putting it all in one document and that we are restating what we have already been doing. So there's no changes to what the current contracts are.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead. Forgive me all. I was just dropped from the meeting, so.
So basically we're just, we're just formalizing it for the record is what you're saying, Patricia?
Yes.
So I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the Defined Benefit and Defined Contribution Plan Adoption Agreement Addendums for each of our working groups.
I'm, I'm sorry. Was that you, Councilmember Walton?
Yes, I think someone else was talking to it. It doesn't really matter to me.
Nope, that's okay. Nope. And then Councilmember Kittle, did you have something you'd like to discuss? Go ahead.
Actually, I just wanted to clarify. I believe all this information had actually been in-house already. This is a formalized version to put it in a, a document, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I figured. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Yes, Patricia, on page two. Employee classification, temporary employees who work fewer than, do these need to be filled in? Or do I just infer that it's something because something else was filled in?
Yes, only, we only filled in the items that pertain to us. So we do not include temporary workers. So that's why that wasn't filled in.
But, but do you have to define what a temporary employee is? That, that's the question. Do you say part-time employees are those who work fewer than? Do you go to the Personnel Handbook and, and correspond those definitions into this? Or is that not necessary?
My conversation with MERS, and I participated on a conference call, was that if we were excluding it, we did not have to define it, but Sue might have more insight. I don't know. That's true. If you're excluding it, you don't have to define it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Walton, to approve Defined Benefit Plan Adoption Agreement Addendum for each of our working groups. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Walton?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kipple?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Caltapp?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gunner Sue, and thank you, Patricia, for being here to assist on that.
Well, if you, there's no need for me anymore. I'll leave you to your business. Thank you for your time.
With that, we will move on to the budget this evening. Do we have anything else that we'd like to go over on the budget? Okay. We'll move on to the manager's report. And City Manager Zelnik, why don't you go ahead and take the lead?
First, I want to bring up regarding the Holly Hills development, that conditional zoning request that came in from the property on Dixborough Road that was tabled at the Planning Commission on November 12th, and I'll advise council when that would be coming back before the Planning Commission. COVID-19 update, state has issued the executive order, or the orders through the Michigan Department of Health and Safety. And what we did in the best interest of the residents, businesses, as well as employees, closed City Hall beginning last Friday at 5:00 PM. We are still conducting business at City Hall. Residents are still able to reach us remotely, call us on the phone. And if we need to, for various reasons, schedule appointments with individuals who need it. City Council computers, I want to advise city council that we did get the computers in. We got, received a grant through the CARES Act funding. And I'll be contacting each one of you regarding setting up the time and place to get those computers. We put, put together processes and directions for setting those up so you can access city council meetings. And those computers did come at no cost to the city. We did have a press release that will be issued, will be issuing tomorrow regarding the water and sewer rating increases and relating to the $10 million in plan improvements that we have. And I believe all of you have a copy of that as well. At our next meeting, we were going to have a presentation by Main Street Oakland County. It is a range of that. And we will also have on the agenda, the approval of the Fieldstone Plan Development Agreement. The last item I want to bring up is regarding the water tank. I know that some questions had come up regarding how we're going to be screening the water tank because the tank is so tall, 30, 30 plus feet tall. We won't be planting trees that are 30 feet tall, but we are planning on, and I've been working with our engineers about screening the fencing or screening around the area for the water treatment plant area by putting up a privacy fence, fence as well as plantings. That process is further down the road because after this tank is finished with construction, we'll be starting, moving on the rehabilitation of the other tank. So there'll be some areas that will not be restored immediately following this tank, but I will update council on that process moving forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone have anything for Paul this evening? Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I, I thought you had made some reference to the property on where Slar had been. Has that, has anything come from that?
No, I messaged our correspondence to the information or to the requests from, or RFPs that we received some, from some individuals who were interested in that particular property, sent back correspondence. I'm awaiting some further answers for them on moving the process forward.
Do you have any estimate of when that would be?
No, I sent follow-up emails just last week because I had not received anything back, but as soon as I do, I will report back to council.
Councilmember Dilg, go ahead. Councilmember Dilg, you are muted again.
I was trying to say that my internet keeps going out, so I couldn't hear everything you said about the water tank. I assume you said we are going to do something for these people that are having to look at it. But do we have any kind of a timeframe that we can reassure them with? Or, I mean, I, I would be really upset if that was the case at my house as well.
Well, we can start with the process next year regarding fencing, but the full restoration won't be able to take place until we do the, some other work on the rehabilitation of the existing 1 million gallon tank. But I'll gladly report back to council as we look at those plans and you can actually see exactly what we're, what we're going to be doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything for Paul this evening? Okay, great. We'll move on to our second public comment this evening. City Clerk Deaton, please let me know if we have anyone for our second wave of public comment this, this evening.
We do.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, great. I was, this is Justin Deesburg from 645 McMunn Street. I talked about the tank earlier. And I was just curious if they're going to put in a new parking lot, maybe like where the, the construction trucks are currently parked overnight? Just because whenever the city has an event, we already get a lot of people parking on McMunn Street. And then we have a lot of traffic from the tube mill. I'm sorry, my baby's crying, but I was just curious if there's a, and I, a plan for more parking because losing that lot is going to be tough for the people that live on Dorothy and McMunn Street, for people to just park down the street all the time.
Just, just so you know, we don't normally interact during the public comment. If, if someone has something to, to respond to that within their, in their council comments, they may.
Okay, I understand.
Just, just so you understand. Yeah.
I understand. I was just, I want to put it out there that losing that parking lot will be tough for the people, people in my neighborhood. So hopefully we can head a lot, maybe where those trucks are already parked, since all that grass is destroyed anyways.
All right. Thank you, Justin. City Clerk Deaton, did we have anyone else for public comment this evening?
No, we did not.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. With that, we will close public comment for the evening and move on to council comments. Councilmember Walton, why don't you go ahead and start us off tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to address Justin's comments and Jake, and Jake and Cassie's comments. As I also live in that neighborhood, and I've brought it up in the past, that we need to put up a sound wall. We need to put up some landscaping. And I'd like to see a parking lot as well. And it does seem like it makes the most sense to take the area that's already been destroyed and flattened out and make that into a parking lot. So I mirror all their comments. I know I've brought it up in the past. We'll, I'll keep bringing it up to make sure that they're pleased in the end. We definitely need to make sure we're taking care of them in that area. Other than that, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I know it's going to be a different one this year, but make sure you stay safe and have a good, safe holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Richards?
Uh, yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Relatively brief tonight, I guess. First off, I'd like to add that I agree with Councilman Walton. I lived at 691 McMunn Street for over 25 years. And the loss of the parking lot is certainly something we should look at for future development in another area. The historical society is also concerned about the matter. With that, moving on, there's so much going on this week. There's a lot of things I'd like to mention, but I just limit it to one other item. I helped Mr. Ledbetter repair some serious wind damage on the caboose at the Historic Village. And I also had the privilege of being there when the, the garage at 501 was opened up and viewed the work that was done by the Eagle Scouts in their project on the inside of the garage. And I was amazed. It was fantastic what they did on the inside of the garage. The general public will never see it because it's always locked up, but I had a chance to see it. And I was truly impressed with the work of the Eagle Scouts in that manner. Also, I just have to say, I wish we could all do our best to struggle through this and, you know, make the best of a bad situation that we're all going to have to cling to our families and our hearts and, and try to be with those we love over the phone and, and make the best of it. It's too bad, but we've got to do it for the safety of the whole state and the nation. And with that, I'll, I'll conclude. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to join in with Councilwoman Rose Walton regarding that the city provide landscaping for Justin and Casey and Jacob and all the neighbors over there. I think it was, I was pleased to hear Justin talk about replacing that parking lot because I have been over there and I have taken a look at it and I'm glad it came up tonight. And I think it's real important for us to understand, just as you heard the baby in the background where Justin was speaking at the meeting tonight, those are young families over there. Some of those are young families and they're dealing with parking that come in and park over there on McMunn because of an event that's going on in the city at 11 o'clock sometimes over at the Witch's Hat, 11:30, midnight. And those families over there are subject to the parking, the noise, the people, sometimes the routiness. I've heard complaints about that. So I think what we owe them is to provide someplace where some of our event activities that do go on in the city can be located in an area that is not so near where, where the families are raising their children. So that, that would be a, a nice consideration. And I have, I have a lot of requests from people, real quick, that have come up to me in the fall and they kind of wanted to know what was new on my COVID-19 list. And so I'm going to do a quick show and tell. I got these at Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. And what they are, are silicone little packets, envelopes. They're washable. And they're great because I can put wipes in here. So if I'm going to a restaurant and I want to wipe down an area, whether it's on a chair or in a restroom, I've got my own silicone that I can carry wipes with me. These have been absolutely fabulous. Recently, I purchased these. This is by Copper Fit. This is a very thin glove, very, very thin. It, it's micro. It has the copper in it. So anti-microbolic sort of benefits to it. I wear these gloves when I go shopping, when I go out to Walmart, when I go out to Lowe's, anywhere I go, I now wear a glove so that there is some separation between me and the surface. I travel, I've been traveling for a while. This has been a great gift that I got at Home, at Home Goods. What this is, is an ultraviolet for your toothbrush. So now you have an opportunity to take your toothbrush and have it sterilized when you're traveling. This is a great product they now come out with. This is a hand sanitizer and a spray. So why is that good? Because I have people that ride with me in a car. And when they get done, I just spray the air. So that way I can do what I can do to try to desanitize any air particles that are, as they leave the vehicle. So is any of this foolproof? I don't know if it is. I doubt it. But what it does, it gives me an opportunity to lower the risk. That's all I'm doing is looking for products out there that I can use and continue on with my life because I, I'm not a lockdown kind of person, that I can continue with my life. So with that, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I'm going to be with friends on Thursday. Be careful, be responsible, use a lot of common sense, but please enjoy your Thanksgiving. See you at the next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kittle, please.
I'd like to address the, the issue with the parking lot at the park and that, where that equipment is, we've used quite often for overflow for events that are going on in the park. That'll be remediated at the conclusion of these water tanks being addressed. So we'll end up having plenty of auxiliary parking for events that are taking place at the, at the Witch's Hat or in McCady Park. So the idea that there's been dirt put on other dirt that had grass on it, doesn't compromise that, that area. It'll still be firm enough to hold cars parking on it in the event that we need it. I just, Cindy and I had gone downtown over the weekend and, or actually just, I guess, a couple of days ago. The, the buildings are just decorated so beautifully down there. They, I really think, like Susan and Annie and all them are really doing a great job with, really bringing a great deal of energy to the beauty of our downtown. And I, I was surprised in the walk, the, the East, Eastlake Dental Office with their new pendant sign. I was really getting a kick out of that because I've been dying to see some of that kind of thing take place in town. It's finally starting to give people an urge to look into different designs to try to get their name out there and that. That's, that's all very exciting. I'm enjoying. I'm enjoying what's going on with RCA, I'm just over the moon about the idea that, that Draft Street has been sold. I don't know what the business conditions are over there, I hope there's no, I hope that the old owner is, is going to be moving away from that building, and the new guy has a good understanding of how to run a restaurant and bar, so that, that's very exciting to me as well. Safe with that, I hope everybody has a terrific Thanksgiving, I hope everybody's safe, if you're going to visit, please use caution and keep yourself sterilized, so that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I, I just want to thank Lowe's, South Lyon residents and council member who contributed the smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors to the South Lyon Fire Department. That was an extremely generous gesture, one which most likely will save the life of someone in this community. Secondly, as Nate mentioned, snowflakes are being hung throughout downtown South Lyon, and finding them could win you a prize, so the City of South Lyon's Downtown Development Authority, Cultural Arts Commission, and the Salem South Lyon District Library are sponsoring a socially-distanced scavenger hunt. Those snowflakes, been decorated by local artists, are being hung around the South Lyon area, in stores and store windows, and starting this week, running through December 20th, members of the public can search for the snowflakes. Those finding half of the snowflakes will be eligible for a prize drawing, those finding all of the snowflakes will be eligible for a separate prize drawing. Details can be found on the Salem South Lyon District Library website and Facebook page, and this is going to be a great event for families, so I'd encourage you to get kids out there and participate in it. And since everybody else already talked about the parking over there, I'll talk about it, too. What was discussed at one time, and will probably be pursued, maybe with input from the Parks and Recreation Department, was the erection of a pavilion over there, in addition to parking, so that we had another place for events, and also a place to, to park cars for it. So those are some of the things that have been talked about, and will probably be pursued somewhere in the, in the future. And one last thing, just want to wish everyone a safe, enjoyable Thanksgiving like everybody else did, so have a safe holiday and enjoy yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy, and Councilmember Dilg.
Thank you, I'll be brief, since my internet will probably die out again, but I just wanted to welcome Alex Hansen to the ZBA, I know him, and I know he's, we are very fortunate to be getting experienced member on that board, another experience, experienced member, as he used to be on the HOEL zoning board. So that's exciting. Wanted to give a shout out of support to the South Lyon Community Schools, and the, the board meeting that they're having, and there's no easy answers, it's tough for them, it's tough for the teachers, students, residents, just, everybody hopefully has some patience and support while they work that out. I just want to also say, please be careful over Thanksgiving, COVID has struck close to my home, and it will be changing the way we'll be celebrating as well, so I hope, I hope other people don't have to deal with that, and I hope everybody's safe and has a happy Thanksgiving, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dilg. I also just want to make sure to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, to each and all of you, our staff here at the city, and our residents. Obviously, the COVID-19 issue is, is, you know, it is reached here, if you didn't think it was here earlier, so as everyone else has suggested, whatever it is your plans may be, please do it in the safest manners you can. Let's be kind to each other out there, it's, it's tough, I saw a tweet earlier this week, I wish I would have prepped for it, and had it ready, but, you know, everyone, you'll run into folks, and they're like, yeah, you know, I'm struggling with this, or, you know, I'm having a hard time with that, we all are, and so if you can, in any way muster up any extra ounce of kindness through the holidays, you just don't know what that might have an impact on, so, you know, let's, let's be good to one another out there as we move through the holiday season. Normally, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn this evening, but we will wrap up council comments, and we will bring in City Attorney Lisa Hamame to discuss our options in going into a closed session this evening.
Well, Mayor, the closed session looks like on your agenda indicates that you would be requiring a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act, at the request of the city manager to conduct performance evaluations. After the closed session, you will then return to open session, and if there's any business to transpire, it would transpire at that time.
Thank you so much for that clarification. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we go to closed session pursuant to Sections 8E and H of the Open Meetings Act, MCL 125.268 E and H, at the request of the city manager to conduct a performance evaluation.
City Attorney Hamame, go ahead.
I'm sorry, there was a typo in the original agenda, it should be Section 8A, not E and H.
I'll go ahead and amend, it's Section what, Section 8A?
8A in parentheses, yes.
Okay, I amend my motion, I can do that without approval from council, because it wasn't seconded. So I'm going to go ahead and amend the motion, closed session pursuant to Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act, MCL 125.268, 8, 8A.
Thank you. Any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Richards?
Yeah.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtswell?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Palchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I'm going to pause the recording, and we need to ask the attendees to leave the meeting. Or I can remove them. There they go. Okay, so I'm going to pause the recording.